Good evening. It is 5:15 this Monday, February 28, and the Carroll City of Council meeting is now in session. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the sweet republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we have today's agenda before us, and we'll call everybody's present. Item number three on today's agenda is the consent agenda. We had a chance to review all that. I will announce the items that are on the consent agenda. It's the first is the approval of minutes from the February 14, 2022 meeting, the approval of bills and claims. We have three licenses and permits, renewal of Class B beer permit, Sunday sales for Godfather's Pizza, renewal of Class E liquor license and Class B wine permit and Class C beer permit with Sunday sales at KC General Store, and a renewal of Class C beer permit and Class B native wine permit with Sunday sales at Chemist Carroll Country Store Number 15. After the licenses and permits, we have reports of two bid openings, one on a small utility tractor for the Parks Department and another one on a front, a 72-inch front mower for the golf department. And then on following that, we have a Sprint.com LLC water tower equipment modification and a resolution to approve the Third Amendment to the water tower attachment option and lease agreement with Sprint.com LLC. And then following that, applications for tax abatements under the Carroll Urban Revitalization Plan. And there are several, there's a resolution to approve several tax abatement requests and a resolution to deny a tax abatement. Before you is the consent agenda. I would seek a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve tonight's consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Ford and Arrow?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Item number four on tonight's agenda is oral requests and communications from the audience. And this is for members of the public that, for any item that is not on tonight's agenda. Are there any oral requests or comments from tonight's attendees? Any online? Hearing none. We will move forward with ordinances. Was there a question?
No.
I'm sorry. Item number five again is ordinances. And there is a reading of the, the second reading of the ordinance amending provisions pertaining to voting precincts. That was, the first reading was two weeks ago, and tonight is tonight's second reading. So Laura?
Yes, thank you, Mark. So at the last council meeting, council did approve an agreement with the county to allow part of an unincorporated area just outside of the city limits on the northeast part of town to be part of voting precinct number one. So in, after that agreement was approved, before council last meeting was to approve the first reading to update our ordinance to include that area. So tonight would be the second reading. And if, so choose to, would waive the third reading and then adopt the ordinance.
You haven't received any further comments since that evening? Nor have I. So before us would be a, an approval, or a motion necessary for, to approve the second reading of it. And so we actually need a motion for that. There a motion for that to approve the second reading of the ordinance amending provisions pertaining to voting precincts?
I don't like a motion.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second. Once again, to approve the second reading of the ordinance amending provisions pertaining to voting precincts. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Base?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Ford and Arrow?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Is there any desire to waive the third reading? Or should we just move the third reading for the next council meeting?
If nobody's heard anything, let's just waive it.
Is that a motion?
That'd be fine.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Well, not to waive the third reading of the voting precincts. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Bauer?
Yes.
Ford and Arrow?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Very good. So we move on to, I, okay, so, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you told me that, too. Thanks for the warning. Yeah, we do have to adopt it. So is there a motion to approve, or to adopt the final reading of the precinct? Sorry.
Second, Ted.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Base?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Ford and Arrow?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
So we were moving to item number six, resolutions. Carroll Recreation Center Building Improvement Project. And Mike, you're going to outline our updates on this and where we're at.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. And Laura, would you pull up my?
Yes.
Screen. I'm just going to go through some discussions, and I'm not going to go through the full report. We spent a lot of time at the last meeting and really looked at and had discussions on what the bids were. And certainly if there's questions on that, I'm happy to review that. But I'm going to just focus on an alternative that was included in the council packet and really discuss it for the public, for the benefit of the public. We had, Mark and I had a meeting discussion last, well, a week ago, over a week ago now, so a week and a half ago, on a Friday, the Friday after the council meeting, where we had this last discussed at, to really have a discussion with RDG to find out if there was some alternatives out there, if there was ways we can lower the cost of the project. And we were really looking for a new design during those discussions. But through it, one of the main focuses was the walking track. Was there some alternatives related to that? And it started to lead into, you know, some, some places are doing them on, on a ground level. Was there a possibility to do that? And reality is, looking at it, it probably isn't an easy way to do that. So then we started to explore, well, what if there's some alternatives, assuming that you did not build a third gym, that you could do this project? So after that meeting, we received some additional information last week from RDG. And I'll review that information. And what they have really proposed now is if the council wanted to go down a path where we would reject the bids and go and look at a redesign, what they would propose is the base bid would include what is essentially the current, what's in the current plans for locker rooms, so women locker rooms, men's locker rooms, four family change restrooms, and then a wet classroom, and then some changes within the corridor itself. So that would remain substantially the same. It would also include HVAC replacements that were proposed in the current plans. Also would address some sewer issues that we had. They are estimating that this phase, this work alone would be $3,400,000. Now, since there would be some changes and with the original scope contract work with RDG, included construction visits and looking at that during construction progress meetings, that would be reduced. So this really nets out to about a $10,000 increase in additional fees to, to address and get this back out to bid. So that would be what I would call the base bid. Now, there was an alternate that they have also suggested that would focus on putting a raised walking track in the existing gyms, would not build a third addition gym. Now, if you recall, the original plans had a elevator and stairwell in the addition area. That would get relocated and put in this. There's an existing storage area, and then they would have to build up through the building and have the stairwell come out onto the raised walking track and elevator. Were required to make it ADA accessible. So that's why we'd have to have the elevator. And then just from a fire code perspective, you have to have two means of egress. So originally, they proposed to have an entrance here and then a secondary exit out here onto the mezzanine. Now, the, this corridor through here, originally the raised walking track was going to be inside the gym. This corridor is an existing HVAC corridor. Now, there is a unit that we were not proposing to replace. Now, that unit is original to the building. It serves the pool itself. That probably has another three to five years of life left on it. RDG has said, you know, it wouldn't pay to move it and relocate it into an area that would be remaining. So they would suggest that we replace that and then actually go to a rooftop unit like the other HVAC we'd be doing with this project. That unit alone is about a $500,000 cost. The unit's $450,000, and then do the structural work to the roof to support. That's about another $50,000. This raised walking track, so this, this elevation here is right at 14 feet 6 inches from the surface of the gym. Now, this mezzanine's 11 feet, so it would slope down. Now, there's some questions about, could a three-point be hit? And I'll talk about that in a little bit and show some alternatives of how we can address that. But assuming we go with the slope, that's what that would show. There would be some electrical equipment in this area that would have to be, would be relocated into, into an area that would be then doored off, so the public wouldn't be able to access it. Now, we've talked to RDG. These doors could go back further and just give us some additional user space that our patrons can use. So that would be a suggestion we would make. Overall, this add alternate would add about $2.2 million to the project cost. Additionally, that would add about $48,000 for RDG to do the design for the plans and specifications for that.
So it's going to be, where's the other slope at?
So it, it slopes down.
Yeah.
Here. This is flat, and then it would slope back up here. And then, so you can see there's a line there. This is the slope area from there to there. And then there's a slope area from here to there. Okay? First floor, again, you can see this is where your elevator and stairwell would be. And then there would be an addition on the north side that would support the raised walking track on the, on the second floor here. Now, there is some concern, like I noted, that would this cause issues and conflicts with a three-pointer? One alternative would be to bump out and do a small addition here. You could then leave this flat at 14 feet 6 inches. That will not, absolutely will not conflict with a, a three-point. This, this edge here, the way it's designed and shown here is virtually right at the three-point line. And so your, your out-of-bounds line is located right there. So it would not be an issue, just with the arc, and we've, we've kind of researched that. But the, the nice thing about the original design with the slope, this was at the same elevation as a mezzanine. This would have stairs. Now, with the mezzanine, we've always placed equipment that is comparable, or we've duplicated the equipment on the first and second floor. So that's how we can get away from the mezzanine being ADA accessible. Because all the equipment that's on the second floor, there's a duplicate on the first floor. So you could just do stairs there. That would add, RDG said that would add about $10,000 to $15,000 for that addition there. And then your walking track would be flat. And just to reiterate, the slope would be about one foot over 20 feet. So most people wouldn't even notice it. It is an ADA compliant slope, so there's no issues there. You, I'm going to back up. Just from a fire code perspective, you need to have two points of egress. They need to be sufficiently separated from each other. So you would need to have some point of egress ingress at this location. Now, you could choose, if you, if making the mezzanine was ADA compliant important, you could add ability of walk into here and then ramp down to the mezzanine level, and then you would be a slope. So this would then be an ADA compliant slope onto the mezzanine. This, too, would be about a $10,000 to $15,000 option. And like I said, you, because your elevator and stairs is here, this is not a, this would be an optional add-on. You still have to have the, the stairs that we previously talked about, talked about as part of this plan. So any questions about kind of this alternative plan? It clearly provides the, the raised walking track. I know that was one element that, as we've heard from the public, and, you know, we did the survey in 2019. This was the number one item. In fact, about 78%, if I recall right, it was well over 70% said this is the amenity they wanted added to the rec center. If that's important to the council, that would be, it's, it's an option that can be considered. From a financial perspective, and this was included in the packet, there's four different options that show here. This first column is the current bid full project, including the add alternate. Really, the bottom line is it's an $8.965 million project. There is, as we know, there's a shortfall from available funding of $1.338 million. And we went over a few different options to cover that. The second column is, again, the current bids without the add alternate or the West Fitness Room. That is a $8.72 million project. Again, $1.093 million short. This third column now shows the, this third column's the base bid alternate. So this is, again, just the HVAC locker rooms and all the associated work around the locker rooms. That is a, with all of the constructions, 3.4, as I noted, but with all the other costs, that brings the total project cost to $4.296 million. And that would be within the project funding that's allotted. This fourth column then shows rebid of the HVAC locker rooms and then doing the alternative raised walking track. Construction price, $5.6 million with the other expenses, brings it to $6.654 million. And it, it, too, is within the available funding. I would note, again, you do have the pool equipment and the pool HVAC equipment that's not part of the other three options. So if you're kind of looking at a true apples to apples, you know, the total construction cost there would be $6.2 million. So that results in a, a, um, total savings of, versus the full project of $2.811 million less than the full project cost. I guess that's kind of a overview. I guess I'd stop there, see if there's any questions.
I, I would just like to mention that the two, everybody in this room and people listening need to understand. The two left columns are actual bids. Those are actual costs that we can count on. The two right columns are estimates only. We will not know the true number until the bids come in. As you know, our original estimate for the rec center came in, $1.3 million over the estimate. So this, these two right columns, estimates only, real numbers, actual costs, the two left columns. We don't know where the bids will land. And in inflationary times, they aren't going to go lower. I think people need to understand the difference between a bid and when you're rebidding, we won't know the actual cost. We do know the actual cost invading bid. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council from either? I appear so. Do you have anything further to add? Or should we?
I don't have anything else.
Move on to the, the resolution options then?
Yep. I mean, we provided five different options for council to consider this evening. The first three were very similar, well, they are the same as the options that were presented at the last meeting. Option D was similar to a motion that was made at the last meeting, and that was to reject all bids and then to proceed with a project that would be the HVAC and the locker rooms as shown on the original plan. So that, option D is substantially the same, but is also, we have the revised number for RDG on what that would cost to do the plans. Option E would be both the base bid of the locker rooms, raised walking track, or the locker rooms and the HVAC, but also the alternative raised walking track. So those are five options that we present. Certainly, there may be other options out there that we did not draft a resolution for that could be considered by council tonight.
Very good. At this time, I know there's plenty of interested people here. If, if you have a question for any of us, we would welcome that at this time. I would just remind everybody, I see a lot of familiar faces and I see some new faces. In the essence of respecting everybody's time and keeping this as business-like and a meeting, not so much a public hearing, we would welcome your comments as long as they're brief and not necessarily just a repeat of what's been stated before. And again, that's not by any means to quell anybody from coming forward. By all means, I'm inviting you to do so. But we do want to keep tonight in a reasonable timeframe as much as possible. So if there's no questions for Mike or anybody from the council right now, I would invite any member of the audience to come forward. State your name and your address and state your question, please. It means scare anybody off. You're all welcome to come up. I know him, but you got to say, say your name.
Okay. My name's Greg Seaman, and I live at 111 East Pleasant Ridge Road in Carroll. I've resided there almost 30 years. Mr. Mayor, I want to compliment you on the nice things that you said about the airport and the operation of the airport recently in the Carroll paper. I've been on the Airport Commission for over 37 years, and we appreciate it when we're recognized for what we've been able to accomplish out there.
Thank you, Greg. Well deserved.
I have this much to share with the, with the council tonight. You know, on the Airport Commission, we've been faced with difficult decisions time and time again. It started almost, oh, boy, in the mid-'80s when we were going ahead with our big runway expansion project. There were a lot of naysayers. There were people that said we shouldn't spend a nickel on that airport out there. And we realized that if the community was going to advance, because we have enjoyed 60 years of prosperity in Carroll based on what was done with that urban renewal project in the '60s and '70s and that rec center, we were, we were the first community of its kind to have anything like that in the, when it was constructed in the '70s. And I remember all those things very, very well. We've enjoyed 60 years of prosperity in Carroll because we moved ahead with projects and got things done. And I, I want to share this with you. One of the things that's, I think, troubling to the council is the fact that, well, the screen's gone now, but the fact that the bids have come in higher than the engineers' estimates for this construction project on the rec center. We've had the same thing happen at the airport with the last three projects that we've done. The, the second to the last one was significantly higher than the engineering estimates. But we had the bids, and we knew that if we didn't do the construction and move ahead, that we would lose ground as, as the regional airport. We just wouldn't be the same kind of airport as we are. And in every case, we moved ahead, done the construction, even though the bids were higher, because we knew that you can't stand still. And we knew to advance the prosperity of the community, we had to keep improving the airport. So I would urge the council tonight to go ahead and accept one of the bids that you already have for the work and go ahead and get it done and preserve the prosperity that we have in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Hi, Ann.
Hi, Mark. Ann Fitzpatrick, 309 South County Road. I was here two weeks ago also. I just want to talk about two things, and one of them's amenities. And the other thing is also status quo. And regarding amenities, it was mentioned that by some people that they say, I don't use the rec center. Well, regarding amenities, we have the rec center. We have Merchant Stadium. We have Swan Lake, Swan, Sockrail Trail, Aquatic, Aquatic Center, golf courses, driving ranges, trails, city parks. We have 13 city parks. We have the library, tennis courts, pickleball courts, frisbee golf, soccer fields, softball complex, football stadium, the skate park, movie theaters, bowling alley, shooting range. My guess is you don't all use every one of them. I don't use every one of them, but you still have to have them because you have to attract people because, and you want to retain people because they are going to use some of those, but not all of them. And guess what we just heard today? State baseball is coming back here because of the things we have, not because of the things we don't have. That's an exciting thing. Everyone doesn't use every amenity, but we need lots of amenities to keep people here. I just talked to a new recruit at the hospital this morning. He plays wiffle ball professionally. Now, we had to grasp him a little bit about that. But who knows? He might bring that sport here, and we could provide that also. Status quo. Being content is status quo, isn't looking for change. It's maintaining status quo, and it's often termed with lack of desire. That is not who Carroll has been in the past. That is not who we want to be. You just heard Greg talk about that. Carroll can't be content with status quo. There's no such thing if you want to be known as a place to be. We're either moving forward or backwards. You can't sit still. Because if you're not moving forward, you are moving backwards because everybody else is moving forward. That same is true for business. It's same for each one of you personally, professionally, and every single person. The decisions that you make today are going to tell what happens with Carroll in the future. And those decisions affect our entire community. I want my kids, your kids, to come back here in the future. That's what we need to build Carroll. I want them to be here, but they will make those decisions, not necessarily based on, somewhat based on the job they have. But every question we ask a new recruit at the hospitals, what do you like to do? What do you like to do to entertain yourself? So we're either moving forward for our children to keep them here and bring them back, or we're moving backward. There is no in-between. Status quo isn't a place you can be. So please move us forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before the council to discuss the resolutions? I know Chase, too, but you got to introduce yourself. Hi, Chase.
Hi. Chase Warden, 2226 Ashwood Drive in Carroll. I just have a question on, so page 76 of the packet compared to page 74. Option D is reject all bids and authorize RDG to be in work for an additional $28,000. Option E is additional $70,000. Option E is additional $76,000. But on page 74, the design expenses for rebid HVAC and locker room are only $10,000 higher than original, and then rebid HVAC locker room and alternative racetrack is $538. I'm just trying to find the discrepancy there in the numbers.
Like I mentioned earlier during my report, the original contract with RDG would be the additional gym, because that would not be an alternative. They would lower their construction review fee by $18,000. So the first option nets to a $10,000 increase.
Okay.
And then the second nets, you know, get $18,000 less. That's the difference.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Good, fair question, though. Thanks. Anyone else, please? Seeing none, I'll turn it over to the council for discussion and debate and resolution.
I thought I saw Jack here. Hi, Jack. Would you answer just a couple of questions?
Certainly.
Thanks. Jack's had a lot of experience with rec centers, has traveled all over looking at them, and everybody knows where I stand regarding accepting the bid. And I've heard over the years, since the first project was rolled out in '07, that we have crowded conditions. In fact, the original design added two more gyms, and an astroturf multipurpose room on the east, the two other gyms on the west. So the new one we're looking at now is greatly scaled down. So we've been hearing about crowded conditions in the gym, as well as the need for a racetrack. And I guess, Jack, would you just discuss usage, why you believe, what you believe the advantages of both are?
Sure. If you come down there, a lot of times during the school year, especially the winter months, there's over, there's times, there's over 100 kids, 150 kids in that gym. There's nowhere for the people that get off of work to necessarily walk, and they have a safe environment. There's basketballs, there's volleyballs, now we have pickleballs. We have all those different things for people to walk. And a raised running track would definitely get them in a safer environment, in a safer place to be. We don't have anyone that runs very much down on the bottom, and there's a lot of runners. Mike alluded to, you know, the survey, the number one thing was the raised running track. And you hear me when I talk about the trails. Number one recreational activity, biking, walking, and running. Well, running is another component. In that gym, it's not just conducive to running. You want a raised running track, they have the oval track, you have the corners, you have the better things. I think we would attract the running elements, the runners to the rec center, if we had that environment. It's, we have winter, five months out of the year, a lot of times, sometimes six. There's just not weather outside in Iowa for people to necessarily always walk, and they don't want to be on the lower part. Yeah, we have treadmills, we have bikes, but not everyone's comfortable getting on a treadmill. That's a moving item. Those are things that make people nervous sometimes, where if they get up on that raised running track. Ideally, yeah, it'd be great if we had a track down below, but that just won't work. We need to raise it up above. They'd have those things to be in a much safer environment. A third gym, you know, if we had that, a lot of our programs, we run at the schools, because we want our facility open. These people pay for memberships, pay to use the facility. Mom and dad want to be able to come down and play in the gym with their kids. Additional gym would free up some of that, so we could maybe run our programs. The schools have been great, and those are things that we'll continue to use whether we have that or not. But just promoting, showcasing our programs with additional gym, I think, would be significant, too. Yeah, just again, safe environment. Pickleball, you know, this morning, we had four courts going, so they went into the other side of the gym. And not that we're very busy in the morning, but there are people that walk in, especially, you know, when school's out, to use that additional part of the gym. So those things, I think, would be definite advantage if we had those items.
Do you think if we had more space, that would attract more people, because you're offering more?
Yes.
And, go ahead.
If you're referring more, you know, to the west side, expanding those rooms. Right now, we have a fitness class that it's too small for. Yeah, it's just one fitness class. But we have ideas, we have things that we want to do with the current size of that one fitness room. I can't go and really expand in any more than 10 in that fitness room, 12 in that fitness room is just too many. But if we're able to do things to attract members, if, Francis, you've heard me say it before, if we had a free fitness class, free fitness classes that were involved with a membership, I think we could really draw people into those free classes. It's another addition to our great low-price rec center membership, and it creates value that if we had both rooms, we could have 25 to 30 people in. People could walk into our classes, try it for the first time. Right now, just because we have such tight quarters, such a tight facility room, we can't do those things out of the box to try to create memberships and get some of those additional people to our facility.
I know that when we were doing the publicity for the referendum, the new gym uses and the information said rented, we would rent them for the additional gym for parties. There'd be more room for teen practices for the high school kids, basketball, volleyball, soccer, batting cages, and pickleball. I know in big cities, to generate revenue, they do rent their excess space. And so that is a big thing in the larger cities, and we were trying to replicate that with the expansion to the east.
And I think some of those things that you just mentioned, maybe is not available anymore in the city, or, you know, for people to use and those things. You always think of the city, and one thing I've heard a long time ago when I first started, you know, the city provides what individuals can't provide for themselves. The rec center, not everyone can go outside and walk all year. Not everyone can have a treadmill, can have these bikes, can have access to a gym to play basketball with their children, play volleyball indoors. So we really need to think about, we are, we feel a void that people can't do themselves. And the rec center is that. That is effort. It's a, Tom Lewis always said it was an indoor park, my good friend Tom, you know, and he's right on. Parks don't make money, but we do, we have parks. We want to have those amenities in our facilities, in our cities, to attract the young people. When Holly and I came here 17 years ago, I interviewed, and the rec center was all the reasons we accepted the job. We're excited. We wanted to be here.
Thank you.
17 years tomorrow, so.
Congratulations.
One of the things I want to bring up on that three-lane walking track is, I went and toured Des Moines, Ankeny, and Iowa State University to determine, you know, should we have a walking track or not? And a couple of things is, they said whenever, soon as they put them in, the senior citizens, during the day, during the winter, attendance went way up. And the other reason is there's three lanes, is because as senior citizens, they like to walk together, side by side, so you have the third lane, so the runners can go by.
Absolutely. And, you know, we offer free programs out to these seniors, that they can now use our facility for free. And, you know, having that track would be an asset. It would definitely help our community.
Thank you.
Can I add one thing, Mark? I know you told us, but, or not?
Please, quickly.
Hi. I'm Jean Guy, 1403 Olive Street, Carroll. You know, when we had the people speak two weeks ago, there was never really a summation of it, and I just wanted to, you know, as I was thinking about it, everybody's feelings are valid, but on the one hand, you had people that were giving individual concepts or comments, excuse me, about how they didn't use the rec center, or they didn't come to the rec center or something. On the other hand, you had a lot of people that actually did recruiting, have dealt with the public and so forth, such as Ann, who is the recruiter, I believe, or I don't know if that's what you call yourself, Ann, but that's kind of what you do, isn't it? Or you take the people, the hires for the hospital. Am I right? Close. Okay. So anyway, I just thought, you know, I think you should keep in mind that you had people that were really experts, for the most part, leaders, business people that have actually done this, and they said we need it, versus some people that just don't use it, which is valid. And going along with that, that wasn't data, you guys. Just, I can come up and say I use it or I don't use it. Anybody can say I use it. I could have 100 people that say I use it, another 100 that say I don't. But where was the data? The data came from the spokesperson that does the development for the governor, or both Branstad and Reynolds. And now, I don't remember her name, but you guys know it. She was in the paper. And she told us, it was in the paper, and she said it, I heard other people that heard her talk, the data shows that enhancing your rec center does enhance recruitment and all that. So I just want to think, I'm a teacher. We have to do everything with data-driven anymore. We don't do anything with I think, or I feel, or, you know, it might be the case. But anyway, I just wanted to reiterate that, but thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
Mark.
Two. That's good. That's a pretty fast, two seconds, but you gotta say your name.
Your name rings here. And in regards to that, the data, I'd like to see the numbers that we requested two weeks ago, the numbers of people, the age populations. You say, you say there's 150 people, 200 people at the rec center on a daily basis. I said I don't have a membership at the rec center. I do take my children there. I've never once seen 150 people in that gym. I take my children there in the winter. I'm just one person. I get it. But winter months are more populated in the gym. I see that. I would, I think the citizens of Carroll would really enjoy to see some of that data of who's in the gym, the age groups, a daily census would be interesting to see from the rec center. Thank you.
Very fun. I just have one thing to say about that.
That would be a part of the evidence.
I'm really supposed to allow it to one, one time, so.
I don't know what exactly, if she was referring to what I said, but the data I was referring to wasn't how many people are in the rec center. The data that the representative was talking about was the data that fixing things up creates more people to want to come to your town.
So it was. Yeah, yeah. We're on the verge of, again, entering into debate in a public meeting, and so I think I'll stop it there. Unless, council members, we have a recommendation to review and consider approving an action plan regarding the Carroll Rec Center building improvement project. And there are five options available to us. There might be, as Mike said earlier, there might be more options perhaps we haven't considered, but at this point, I think it's time to move forward with a vote on a specific resolution. Any other discussion? Well, once a motion is made in a second, there will be time for more discussion, of course. But unless there's anything else from the council at this point, I would entertain a motion on one of the resolutions.
Mark, I'd like to make a few comments.
Okay.
And share some questions that went through my mind as I arrived at my decision to accept the bid. And this is numbers-driven. It's in our packet for tonight, so I've drawn my information from the packet. Question number one, should we make this decision based on the bid's actual costs or the estimated costs? Which is more, which is fiscally more responsible? To me, moving forward with the 8.965 million bid is fiscally more responsible than working from estimates and rebidding, because this risks higher construction and design costs to fund a significantly scaled-back project. RDG explained in a recent email to us with this new option, there are, and I quote, "There are a number of things to think about when rebidding a project." Number one, escalation over the next two to three months, knowing we may not see all the savings anticipated by reducing the overall scope. Number two, there may be reduced interest from contractors who bid on the initial project. Number three, construction is picking up, and contractor schedules are filling up and may reduce the number of potential bidders, as well as subcontractors. Considering RDG's comments, we need to lock in Bating's bid to avoid higher costs and additional design work. With the additional $76,000 of design work, that brings $76,000 plus $480,000 of design work to this point, up to $556,000 in design work. It's a waste of money. Remember, we have a path to fund the 1.3 million shortfall without raising taxes. Lost debt does not raise taxes. It comes out of our lost revenue from people coming to Carroll and shop here. Question number two that I thought about, what about the lost annual debt payment over 20 years? Which of the following is fiscally more responsible? The lost annual debt payment over 20 years for the full project is $379,000 per year. The lost annual debt payment over 20 years for the scaled-back new option, the base bid and alt-race track, based only on cost estimates, comes in at $340,000 a year. That's from our consultant, PFM. Debt payments for the full project are only $39,000 per year more than the payments for the scaled-back project. We are getting a lot more value for the additional $39,000 of fiscally more responsible use of lost funds. Question number three, what about delaying construction of the new gym and full racetrack? Is this fiscally responsible? In an email response to my question, I emailed RDG about the cost of adding the gym and expanding the track in 2024, looking two years down the road. RDG said, and I quote, "Conservatively, estimating this out to 2024, removing the cost of the stairs and elevator and the track that would already be in place from the new, you know, the new choice we have." I put a range of $4 million to $4.5 million costs. That's in addition to the $6,654,000 estimate for our new alternative. So add these amounts to the new option of rebidding, and remember, it's an estimate. Excuse me. And the amount is much higher than the bid for the full project. You add $4 million to the $6.654 million, and we come up with $10,654,000 in '24, way over Bating's bid. In fact, about $1.7 million over Bating's bid. You add $4.5 million to the $6.654 million for the new alternate, and this comes in almost $2.2 million over Bating's bid. Adding the gym and expanded racetracks later is fiscally irresponsible. This drastically increases the cost, and these may never get built. We have the option to accept the current bid with known costs without the west fitness room remodel. That has not been voted on yet. It's one of our options. Delaying the multipurpose room would be a lot less, would be a lot less expensive and less disruptive than adding the gym and expanding the track later. So I will make the motion based on those numbers. Not my opinion, not my feelings, not my emotions, but based on hard numbers that we accept option A, approve base bid only. only, no West Side Fitness Room renovations. Think about the numbers. And, and being fiscally responsible. That's how I approach my decision. Thank you.
Is there a second to that?
That is your motion?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I'll second that.
And we have a motion and a second to approve the base bid only with no West Side Fitness Room renovations.
Hang on a little bit. You said we can discuss this afterwards. How do I want to start on this? Initially, the last time, I had the base bid plus the West Edition and using stimulus money for that. So this is a little bit of a downscale for that. And I guess I want to try it one more time, because initially, I wasn't going to do this. I was probably looking at the alternate. But so many people have contacted me through email, seeing me, calling me, texting me, that I just feel I got to try it one more time for all those people that have contacted
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second still. Any further discussion? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
Her.
You do?
Yes.
Okay.
I just want to clarify, she has made a motion for option A.
Option A, which is the, approve the base bid only and no West Side Fitness Rooms.
That reduces it by 245,000, based on hard numbers, yeah.
Correct.
From Bating.
Any other questions? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Roll call. Shrek?
Dirk?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Bauer?
No.
Board Naro?
No.
Base?
Yes.
Three, three, motion fails.
Okay, I'll try one more time with another bit, another motion, to accept option A, same motion, but to enter into value engineering. To reduce it further than the 245,000.
That's right.
These are hard numbers.
It's already been done?
No, we have not. No, I did the full project. This is without the West Side.
Okay, so this is approve the base bid with value added, which would be substantially different.
Yes, right. Yeah, thanks. Yeah, you're right.
So on that, I did talk to an engineer on that. You know, we have talked, you know, upwards of 5%. He's telling me realistically, 2 to 5%, you can count closer to the 2%. So that's, that's the only thing that I would have to say on that.
Okay, we still have a motion on the table? Is there a second to that? And the motion, once again, was...
Let me ask, Kyle, 2% of, what, 7 million?
2% of the, for value engineering, yes.
2% of 7 million is, I don't know.
That's, that's an estimated. It's not guaranteed.
No, I know. I know. These, yeah.
So again, the motion was to approve the base bid only, no West Side Fitness Rooms renovation with trying to apply value-added services to it. Is that correct, Carolyn?
That's correct, Mark.
There's a motion to that effect. Is there a second? Going once. No second. Motion fails.
So before, I just mentioned that I'd like to try the alternate plan. Just do, go and do the gym, do the raised three-lane walking track, and that would be option E. And add alternate. You know, some of this, what I like about this is, is, you know, part of our council is we need to bargain a little bit. Is that what you probably say is, you know, the top end didn't work and the bottom end didn't work? This is something that's in between. And, you know, my calculations and the numbers between, between, this plan is 2/3 less of going down on the money compared to from just doing the HVAC and the locker rooms is the third up. So it's, you know, it's more of a dollar reduction to try and get to a point where something will pass. My motion would be to do option E.
I'm going to second that option.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to, I'll reread it here. Option E, which is to reject all bids and authorize RDG to begin work for an additional $76,000 in construction plan design fees for the base bid and the add alternate project as outlined in the staff memo, which we probably don't have. But essentially, what this is, is this is the design work that Mike explained earlier. Motion and a second.
So this is getting the two gyms, the walking track, HVAC, locker rooms, corridor project.
We're basically just putting walking track in the...
No, this is just the gym and then adding a walking track above it.
Yeah.
There's not an extra...
Correct, yep. And this is at the 14-foot level.
Yeah, I, I would like to...
I'd like to see the 14-foot level versus the...
I would do too. You know, I don't, I don't... That's something that we need to discuss tonight in the planning.
No, and I think as we, we go through, that's, that's an element we'll...
Yeah, I, I agree. We need to eat that baby up and figure out something else. And you're talking, what was it, a $10,000 difference?
10 to 15,000.
Yeah, I, I agree with Kyle. But let's decide what we're going to, if we're going to do that or not at this point.
Is there still the ability to do, like, the valued engineering with this plan?
There, there always is. Now, you know, I've had to...
It has to be rebid though.
It still has to be rebid.
Yeah.
So the value of engineering would, if the bid didn't come in to what the estimate was, we could pursue value engineering at that time.
I think we all know that something has to be done, and we're going to have to make a compromise. It's not going to be, obviously, not going to be the full thing, and I think we all know where we're at of just the HVAC, of the basics, so.
And there was somewhere of these 100 pages we've got here lately, of if this gets constructed, we're going to make it so that if there ever is a gym added to it, that we won't have to tear out a lot of stuff. We'll be able to add. Is that correct?
Correct. I mean, this, this is being designed in a way that if in the future, the city would like to do the third gym, that could be accomplished. And, and there's little things, like, one, one of the things that will still be replaced in here is the sewer line. And the sewer line is located in a place today that the new gym would go, but it's being replaced as part of this project because it's failing. And so that needs to be replaced. So we'll locate it in a place that will not impact a future gym addition. At least, that's what we proposed.
Yeah. If in the future, that other gym is added, I know that I, I think that I asked this the other day, but the walking track at that point, could that be extended through that third?
Yeah.
JJ, that's what the architect told me, that if it did get added, they would expect with that 4 to 4.5 million for, to do that, to add the gym, that included the extension. So we got up to the 1/10 mile, correct?
We still have a motion and a second to approve option E. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? Roll call?
Board Naro?
No.
Dirk?
Yes.
Shrek?
No.
Seaman?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
4-2, motion is approved.
Motion passes. So there we have it. Thank you, everyone. There you go. Okay, we will move to resolutions, item number, or item B, which is a fiscal year 23 maximum prop dollars. And it is 6:15, and I will open the public hearing for that. Laura?
Yes, thank you, Mark. So as we talked here for the last couple council meetings about this new process where we need to hold this public hearing for the maximum property tax dollars, tonight is that opportunity for this?
Hold on just a second here. Please. Thank you. Go ahead, Laura.
So the new required public hearing notice will only report on part of the property tax levies that are collected by the cities. The ones that affect Carroll are the 810 levy, our tort liability, and the employee benefits levy. Included, I guess I didn't do the public, excuse me. So on, what's included in your memo tonight is the resolution that sets the maximum property tax levies or the dollar amount. And this was prepared based upon the budget that was discussed with council. The notice of the public hearing was published in accordance with the law on Friday, February 18th, which is in our required time period, and it was posted on all the city's social media sites, which is also a requirement. So tonight is the time and the opportunity for the public hearing. At this point, we did not, I had not received any comments in the office prior to the meeting And again, this resolution was prepared based upon the proposed budget that council discussed in January and February. And there, I know there were some discussions at a council meeting about a reduction in some of the property tax collections. That is not inflected in this. It's based upon what is in the budget book.
Okay, so it matches the preliminary?
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
And it can, it can be reduced later, at the time that we either set the public hearing for the budget, which is on the agenda later, or at the time of the public hearing for the budget, if there is a desire or council wants to...
I was going to say, 7A is when we're going to talk about the dollar amount, right? Or you want to talk about it now?
Well, this is...
This would be the, the time and place for the public hearing and then...
7A is actual money. Is that what we're talking about here?
It's, 7A is the date.
Reports.
He's on the agenda.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
This would be the place that you, you can talk about it at both times. You could amend the resolution. You could, you can lower it at this point, but you cannot increase from what was published.
I would like to entertain the fact of the 151 that we talked about before, re-entering that because of deduction. With all the three scenarios that we put in the last time.
Any other comments on that discussion? So essentially, this would be lowering the levy, you know, back to where it was discussed at the, I think, February 9th, last budget workshop.
So that would change the line that says total maximum levy for affected property tax levies. Currently, it says 5,655,712 to 5,504,712.
Well, I'm hearing no, no one in opposed to it, so I suggest that we're going to move forward with that one, then. Is that correct? Okay, there's no motion for that, but we would have a resolution here in just a moment, correct? Yeah. So unless there's any further discussion, I'll close the public hearing.
You should ask if there's public comments.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I forget to do that, too. Is there any public comments? Thanks, Mike. Hearing none? I show 6:19, we'll close the public hearing on the approving the fiscal year 23 maximum property tax dollars. And now I'd seek a motion to approve the resolution for that suggestion.
As amended, is that your motion that you want to...
Yes.
Propose? Okay.
Put the 151 back in as a reduction.
As a reduction, yep.
Yes.
So we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Misty second it? Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
Board Naro?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Very good. Thanks, all. Moving at lightning speed to item C, not to exceed 2.6 million 50,000 general obligation capital loan notes for street improvements. And we have a resolution to fix the date for a meeting on the proposition to authorize a loan agreement and the issuance of notes to evidence the obligations of the city there under. Mike, you want to just kind of explain?
I'll let Laura...
Or Laura, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Wrong, Mike.
Thank you, Mark. The fiscal '23 budget proposal does contain a debt, debt issuance for a street improvement project and partial funding for the rec center project. The debt issuance for the street project is considered or what's called an essential corporate purpose, while the debt issuance for the rec center project is called a general corporate purpose. Basically, what that means is there's two separate parts of the Iowa code that we would need to follow for public hearing purposes. Since the scope of the rec center project was just somewhat determined a few minutes ago, at the time that we were putting this information together, we were, staff was recommending not to proceed forward with the debt issuance for the rec center, however, but to proceed forward with the debt issuance for a street project. We can always do the debt issuance for the rec center project at a later date. We would need to hold the public hearing and then approve it. Approve it entering into a loan agreement. While the fiscal '23 budget does include an estimate of principal interest to be repaid and is incorporated into the tax levy and the tax dollars that was just amended and approved at the last resolution, in order to include this tax asking in that, in our fiscal '23 levy, we need to conduct a public hearing, which we're proposing with this resolution tonight, to set the public hearing for the next council meeting on March 14th, and then hold that public hearing and then approve a pre-levy resolution prior to adopting the fiscal '23 budget. The pre-levy resolution tells the public that the city has a need for some money, some tax money, to pay for a debt service or pay for principal interest for specific projects from debt that's going to be planned to be sold at a later date. The pre-levy resolution gives that basis for that tax, or, excuse me, for the debt service to be included in our fiscal '23 budget. Otherwise, we would not have the authority to collect the taxes. The current proposed fiscal '23 levy does incorporate a repayment amount of 349,568 for that debt issuance. So attached to this resolution, or, excuse me, attached to this memo is the resolution to set that public hearing, and this is a first step in that process, that we would propose to have that public hearing at the next regularly scheduled council meeting on March 14th. Does council have questions about the resolution or just the whole process that we're walking through to issue this debt? And then planning to include this tax asking in the fiscal '23 tax levy?
So the only thing that's finite is the 2.6, and then it still offers this flexibility to...
The only thing that's finite with this process would be putting the 349,568 of tax asking in the, in the levy.
Okay.
So there still would be flexibility on the actual dollar amount to be issued, because I know there's still some discussions on what type of, or which scope of project for a street project to be done the next year as well. So if a bigger project's done, then there's this not to exceed 2,650,000. If a smaller project is completed, we would only need to issue a smaller amount of debt.
Correct. I got it.
So the dollar amount being paid will be the same, it's just that the length of time will change.
Amortization.
Yep.
Yes, yes.
Okay, the recommendation is for council consideration approval of the resolution before us, which would be for the issuance of, well, to set the public hearing date first.
Yes.
Which would be the 14th for the issuance of capital notes not to exceed the 2.6. Is there a motion to that effect? Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second to set the public hearing date for March 14th. Laura? Roll call, please.
Shrek?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Board Naro?
Base? Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Very good. Item number D on resolutions is the US 30 sanitary sewer extension. And I see that it is 6:25. We will open the public hearing on that. And Randy is my man. Hi, Randy. Where you been all night? There you are. Just listening. Quietly. I love you.
On February first, the proposed plan specification form of contract and estimate of cost for the US thirty sanitary sewer extension were filed. They, the plans illustrate the extension of a sanitary sewer east of Griffith Road on the south side of the US thirty. The base bid is thirteen hundred feet long, and then there is also an alternate bid included that's an additional seven hundred feet. So the, you'll have the option to take either one if this goes to bid. The specifications are the statewide urban specification with our local supplemental spec included. Form of contract is the SUDAS unit bid price form. The estimated cost, construction cost is four hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars. With that estimate of construction cost, the total project cost is currently at four hundred and ninety-one thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. All the funding for this project is proposed from the sewer utility fund. Project schedule includes bid receipt March twenty-second, award consideration on March twenty-eighth, and construction completion by the end of August of twenty-twenty-two. Unless there are any questions, I'd recommend your consideration of approval of the resolution approving the plans, specification form of contract, and estimated cost for the US thirty sanitary sewer extension.
It just feels like to me we're, we're getting ahead of, you know, we have to annex, right? So should, should we do that first before we decide? This, I know this is an estimated cost, but it seems like we should do that first, because if that doesn't, that fails, then why are we doing this?
Well, this, first of all, this is just a public hearing.
I know.
And so, and we're not accepting bids at this point.
We're just accepting.
Yeah. And then.
But it just feels to me like that should be done first, I don't.
I mean, it's, it's not, it's not uncommon that when you have an annexation, you're starting to move, extend utilities to have this type of secrecy.
It just felt out of place for me.
And we'll have a discussion on the annexation here.
Okay. Yeah, I know, it's on the agenda.
Any other comments or questions for Randy, please? So we have the recommendation that the council conducts the required public hearing, consideration, passage of the resolution as described. Is that correct? Any other comments? Anything from the public? Anybody online? Anybody?
There's two online, they would need to unmute their mic if they want to talk.
Okay. Okay, hearing none. Yet no other comments from the public receiving at City Hall. I'm showing six twenty-eight to close the public hearing. And then now would we move forward with consideration of adopting the plan? Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve or adoption of the plan to move forward with specifications and form of contract for the Highway thirty sanitary sewer extension.
I've got, I have one question, I just need to get this clarified. We're moving forward with this, so we're tied into a design fee of forty-five thousand dollars, is that correct?
Correct.
And if these properties aren't annexed in, we're out that forty-five thousand dollars.
That'd be correct. Design fees already been paid, I mean, we're through design at this point.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I mean, there may be some construction oversight that we haven't paid yet, but substantially, we've been through most of this design fee.
Yes. Any other comments, questions?
Liburn, I think this is why you were asking chicken for the egg, egg for the chicken, so.
Still have a motion and a second. Last call, any discussion, comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Dirks?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Board narrow?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Item E is Graham Park Drainage Ditch seventy-seven improvements. And I show six thirty-one, Laura, and I'll open the public hearing on the plan specifications form of contract, estimated costs, and turn it over to my man Chad.
So on February, February fifteenth, plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Graham Park Drainage Ditch number seventy-seven improvements project were filed. They go as such, so the plans basically is preparation, excavation of the creek bank, outlet repair, and creek stabilization along Graham Park and Grant Road. The specifications, further detail the construction of the planned involvements or improvements, specifications are the statewide urban specifications plus our local supplemental specifications. Form of contract is SUDAS sample contract, estimated project expenses and revenues, total expenses would estimate around two hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars, as the revenues for this project are three hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars. Proposed schedule, we have pre-bid meeting tomorrow, bids due March fifteenth at two P M., and then award of contract would follow. Or, excuse me. City Council conduction of the required public hearing and consideration of adoption of the plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Graham Park Drainage Ditch number seventy-seven improvements, the twenty-twenty-two project.
And that's your recommendation, thank you. Any comments, any questions for Chad, project? Anything from the public? Hearing none, how about online? Anybody? Hearing none, I'm showing six thirty-three, close the public hearing on the Graham Park Drainage Ditch seventy-seven improvements. Now we are in order for consideration of adoption of plans.
A second. The, the amount of money that we're not going to spend on this will just go into the lost balances. I mean, you're a hundred and ten thousand dollars more money than what the cost is. So you're just gonna?
Yeah, I mean.
You got two lost items.
It would go back to the lost. Yeah.
And that was primarily to receiving the re-grant, correct?
Well, that's what I was looking at, because it was a hundred and twenty-five, and I just wanted to make sure where that money was gonna go.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? We are still in order for a motion to move forward with consideration, adoption of plans, specifications, form of contract at the estimated cost.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Board narrow?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you all. Okay, we are to item number seven, and under reports, there's two items, the first one being fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget to set the public hearing date, which essentially we kind of covered a little bit earlier, but Laura?
Yes, thank you, Mark. So what's been prepared and before you tonight is the proposed budget that was based upon the preliminary budget that was in the budget book, but there was a change made just a few minutes ago. So staff, or I will have to go back and make some changes. Actually, should I go ahead?
Go ahead.
So I did make some changes or did prepare, oops, not that, sorry, to show a little bit what staff would recommend the changes to be. There's a lot of things in here that'll change. Staff recommends that the, the decrease in the tax asking tax dollars would come in this area under the employee benefits, so it would lower that levy, that portion of the overall levy. And I'm gonna scroll down here, so the new levy would be eleven dollars and eighty-five, almost eighty-six cents, from what was proposed of the twelve fourteen. Twelve fourteen, based upon the motion that was approved just earlier. Based upon what was discussed at one of the, but it would be, I'll turn it.
Rotate button.
Yep. I'll get there. Let me get to the right pages that I need to first. Okay. So the changes that were discussed at the meeting was to remove a mower at the cemetery, so the cemetery line item there has been reduced by thirty thousand. Let me make this a little. Area was to reallocate eighty-six thousand, the golf course pump house slash irrigation project from the general fund to the special, or to the local option sales tax fund, which is a special revenues fund. Have been changed as well. Moving the comp plan amount to thirty-five thousand under the general fund under this area of community and economic development. So those three items are incorporated into these forms, and so you can ignore what was in the agenda packet, because these will be the new forms, and then the, the public hearing will be published based upon the lower, the lowered one hundred and fifty-one thousand of tax asking in the, in the levy. So the new public hearing. Let me go backwards. Is, are highlighted here of the budget. Now then, obviously, actual fiscal twenty-one was completed, and then there was no changes or no discussion about changing anything in the reestimation presented to council. Are there any questions? So to set that public hearing for the next council meeting on March fourteenth.
And we didn't do that earlier officially?
No, we did not. Nope, this would be the official time to make that motion.
Okay. So the recommendation is to set the public hearing date for the fiscal year twenty-three budget for the council meeting on Monday, March fourteenth. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll move.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion?
And just to reiterate, obviously, this is a change that was just made tonight with that reduction of the one hundred and fifty-one thousand. Based on last discussion, the three areas that'll affect is removal of the comprehensive plan update of thirty-five thousand, removal of the cemetery mower of thirty thousand, and then reallocating eighty-six thousand dollars that was going towards the irrigation system, moving that from general fund dollars to lost dollars. There's a lot of changes, as you can see, just the highlights on this one page, a lot of changes that'll be made throughout all these forms to accomplish that. So really, just understanding that staff has flexibility to, to stay within those parameters, the, the levy rate that we've seen, but we'll work through that, is that?
Right, I guess one other area that if, I know I didn't talk about it, but when we make a slight change with the actual overall levy, it changes just a little bit on how the, the backfill money comes to the city. We'll still get the same dollar amount, but it'll just depend on which fund it'll go to, based upon a tool that the Department of Management has provided us with. It shifts the funding just a little bit from coming in as a special revenue to either the debt service levy or, or debt service fund or the general fund. So that is reflected in these numbers here, I did figure out what that is. And once again, that's all estimates, it's all dependent upon truly what the full amount that we will get from the state. But there was a slight change with that as well.
And the backfill, you're referring to the commercial backfill?
Yes, yep, the commercial backfill, yes.
Okay. And we still have a motion and a second, and any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Dirks?
Yes.
Board narrow?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Item seven B is discussion item on the RZAC annexation request. This came up earlier, but, I think, Mike?
Yes, take this, thank you, Mark.
You take this, yep.
And if you'd pull up my computer, you have a chance. So James RZAC and Amanda RZAC, owners of Choice Auto, have approached the city, as you know, to extend sanitary sewer to their property. This, their property. What is going on? I was thinking I have dual monitors in here. So they own this property, so Pebble Windows is just to the west, the Aqua Line is where the city limits would be, so they're contiguous to the city limits. They are requesting annexation. Now, since their property is not within the city limits, that's one of the requirements to access city infrastructure, water, and sewer, that they do need to be in the corporate limits, so that's the purpose of the annexation. Now, in a voluntary annexation, Iowa Code section three sixty-eight point seven one A permits a city to include up to twenty percent of a territory without the consent of a property owner of the territory to avoid the creation of islands or to make more uniform boundaries. In this case, Choice Auto property is adjacent, and actually, there's kind of a carve-out for a property owned by APQS LLC, that's shown here on the overhead as parcel number two. This property, APQS, would represent nine point five percent of an overall annexation area, if they would be included to create more uniform boundaries. Staff would recommend including them in such annexation. But before we proceed in starting that process, I'm requesting the council review, discuss, and provide us direction on how to proceed. In of APQS. A RZAC voluntary annexation request. If you have to answer any questions, the council would have this evening. Thank you.
Mike, the owners of property number two were contacted.
I did have a conversation with them late last week about it, kind of went through, through it, and also did advise them that this is really, frankly, it's an early step, it's not one of the recorded steps, so there'll be additional notifications we'll provide to them as we go through this, both from the city's perspective, if they're included, but then also the state through the city development board, if they're included in this annexation, they would get notification through that process.
Thank you, good.
Randy, we couldn't tell from your map when you talked before, but on this map here, your sewer line goes to, Mike, do you have it? You, you have the extension that goes onto that?
How far?
How far, how far on this map does the extension go to?
It would go to the west line of the property number two.
Okay. That's the extension.
Yes. Well, so the only question at hand would be, does the council wish to annex the AQPS property or not? And just annex just the RZAC property? Correct?
Correct.
So do you need to take a vote on it, or how do you do that?
Open discussion, but yeah, we, we're gonna need a motion eventually, but yeah.
I'm gonna vote no on annexing them. You know, they, they volunteered, the Choice Auto did, let them do it if it's just for a simple drawing, just let it be. I mean, if I was out there, I'd be upset that I got annexed and my taxes went up three thousand dollars.
Is there a motion to that effect, Tom?
Yes.
I, I do have something I want to say. So if that is left out, is that able to be added in later if somebody else wants to be annexed in down the road?
So that, that sometimes always becomes the issue, and I think that's why cities generally, when they have the ability to include such properties, they do that. Because again, you can include up to twenty percent of property, non-consenting in a voluntary annexation process. There is a process to do a non-on voluntary, non-voluntary annexation, but it's pretty much unheard of in the state of Iowa and very, very difficult to go through. So that's why cities, when they are faced with issues like this, where they can make regular boundaries. Now, kind of to your point, when we look out here, you know, we know McLaughlin has requested voluntary annexation, and then they've, they've approved an irrevocable annexation agreement with the city, and that was part of extending. with the city, and that was part of extending sewer out to their property. You know, there's no interest with these property owners today. But in the future, you could end up where we know Farner Bakken is actively, the Farner family, excuse me, is actively trying to sell the vacant property they have north of here on Highway 30. You could end up down the road where industrial bearing does approach and want to be annexed so they could get sewer. Well, now you have an issue where because that would create an island, potentially you may not be able to bring them in because that would represent less than or more than 20% of the land area. So it's a numbers game to a certain extent. Certainly understand the viewpoint that there is a property owner that is not consenting to inclusion in an annexation, and so it's a difficult position.
Definitely understand, I just don't want to see us close our doors to where we can't bring somebody's sewer later on down the road when they do need it. Because honestly, I feel like if that's the case, then it's like, oh, we're shutting off the city right here, we're not expanding out any further, so.
Yeah.
And that stops right at that line because you haven't annexed it yet, or you haven't got approval for them. So according to Mr. Kyle, it stops at the left side of his building up there, right?
That's the city limit stops there, but the sewer's running across Pebbles property, is that correct?
So it will be. It will. So with this project, it would come up to this location. So it's currently, I need to find like a better map. We can visualize.
And that's my point, it currently stops at their lot line, so what would be the point of, in the future, somebody wants to, McLaughlin's or somebody wants to keep going, it's got to start there anyway, correct?
Correct, but I think the concern, yeah, the concern you would have is if you cannot annex because of.
A property being left out.
Correct. So the sewer today, correct me if I'm wrong, Randy, it's really generally in the northwest corner of the Pebble property. And then it'd be extending to this location. You know, the issue becomes in the future, if Farner Bakken is, or the Farner family property to the north is in the corporate limits, and in the future, like industrial bearing would like to annex, this potentially could prohibit them from annexing into the community.
So that sewer across where the Farner's owns, or that land across where the Farner's owns, that sewer will be ran across the street or under the highway?
Correct. And this generally would serve a larger area both east and north of where it's being, this is just potentially one of several extensions that could happen in the future.
Yep.
Okay, you still had made a motion. You know, to not, to annex the RZAC portion only. Am I saying that correctly? Okay, is there a second to that effect?
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to annex the RZAC property only. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Board Nero?
Yes.
Dirks?
No.
Bauer?
No.
Seaman?
No.
Shrek?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Motion fails 3-3, yeah.
The only other alternative motion would be to annex the whole thing. I'm not suggesting that. Make that clear, I'm just saying that's the only other action the council could take if they so choose.
So later on down the road, I'm just looking later on down the road for future development across the road, the Farner ground, even on out on 30. I think just planning ahead, making sure we have it there and available to people.
It'll be there anyway, I mean, if we're going all the way out to RZACs, right?
Well, the only problem is if that's not included, then that could potentially hurt it from going out further. Yes, that's my only worry is, well, potential commercial development out there could be done or could be ended.
I think it would be viewed as an asset for development down the road, potentially.
Kyle's right, you could have trouble down the road, but you're limited to what you can do.
And not to be one-sided, working for the McLaughlin family, but you know, I think they put up a large trump to put their own sewer in, which tells me that there may be other people down the road that is, are going to want that as an option, so.
Here's the other question, if Farner sells their land, does this eliminate them?
No, I mean, so again, the real question is really before the council, it's the 20% in avoiding creating islands.
Okay, I get it now, right.
You know, Farner can come in, we can extend the sewer, not a problem.
If the things aren't that extended on Highway 30 east past McLaughlin's, you're going to be in trouble or.
Future development across the road.
Right.
All right, enough discussion on that. Motion, that motion failed. No other motions then?
I mean, at some point, I guess we're still kind of looking for direction on.
Just the RZAC property. Sorry, I tried to answer or finish your sentence and I shouldn't have, sorry.
I mean, I would, yeah, I mean, I'm assuming the council wants to continue with the annexation.
Yeah, I mean, it's voluntary, so I don't know, you know, why we wouldn't, you know, so I mean, but there needs to be a motion to that effect and.
Well, but the motion that just failed was just RZAC only.
Okay, I'm sorry, and so is there, that's what I meant, was there a motion to, because I said earlier, the only other option is to annex at all.
Well, fair enough, yes.
Yeah, I stated that, but that's all right. And you know, if there is, we have to vote on that one too.
I'll make a motion for that, and the reason being is for future development and growth later on.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to annex the entire two properties. Is there any further discussion?
Mike, I'm just curious. I'm at a point here where I'm not sure that I should be voting. I'm going to be very honest. I'm obviously going to say no because I'm vying for the APQS property as we're trying to sell that property. And quite honestly, I mean, there isn't much growing that direction. I mean, industrial bearing just put in their own septic system because they weren't allowed to get hooked onto city, or it, the conversation didn't go as planned or expected. And I think McLaughlin's have their thing going, so I don't know where I stand with this. I mean, obviously, my vote is no, and so I just.
I turned it over to.
I'm sorry, Dave, yes.
So you're considering yourself conflict of interest?
I think so.
Is that obscene? Would that be an obscene?
I guess the decision would need to be made, Misty, whether or not you will declare your conflict of interest, then you would not vote.
I'm assuming because I'm the controller out there, and I'm in the works of selling that property, so I mean.
And the question actually would be, does your employment affect your decision in, with this? I would say if it does, then you have a conflict.
No, I mean, I guess I'm not the one that's making the final decision, but at the same time, I'm sitting here for my owners, saying that they would prefer not to be annexed. They're not here, they were talked to, so I feel like I'm the one standing up for my company.
And I think that probably reflects a conflict of interest. You're standing up for your company as opposed to a neutral decision maker, policymaker here in the council.
Okay.
That would be my opinion.
Okay. Then I think I need to stay out of it. I feel like.
So do we have to go back to that emotion, then it would be a 3-2?
So. Well, we haven't done that yet. Well, there hasn't been a motion placed on the table yet, so.
Yeah.
The one and the.
There is a motion? Okay, for.
The whole. Yes.
Okay, all right. So yeah, Misty, if you're declaring that you have a conflict of interest, then you are, this is a five-person vote. Where three would be a majority then, be a 3-2? If that's how the votes come out.
So you have to reverse the motion, reverse it, it goes, it passes, so.
I didn't hear what you said, Tom.
You'd have to reverse it. It's three to two.
Well, we haven't voted yet.
Well, there you go, let's do it again. All right, make a motion, two.
So there is a motion and a second to annex both properties into the city of Carroll. Motion is second made, so roll call please.
My first name on here is Base, and you had said abstain, right?
Shrek?
No.
Dirks?
Yes.
Board Nero?
No.
Bauer?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3-2.
Okay, that pretty well concludes everything that's on the agenda. It does leave any committee reports, comments from the mayor, I have none, comments from the city council? Hearing none?
Yeah, I just have one thing I want to clear up, and I'll be quick. I just want to clear up for the public listening, anybody here who's interested about the city's financial involvement in Kellin's Kingdom. And we initially jump-started the project with a $50,000 donation from Hotel Motel. Then we funded a Northeast Park master plan for $14,900 to accommodate Kellin's Kingdom and then the baseball field. We then contributed $65,000 for the all-inclusive playground equipment. I know some people on the council donated their time for this, I believe Laverne did. And then we are in the process of doing the northeast parking lot improvements, which we will pay the full cost for, so there is adequate parking and safe parking for people that are at the park. And that total cost is $287,167. So we have committed, paid for, and in the process of paying for, a total of $417,067 for Kellin's Kingdom, and we're all very happy to do that. So thank you, just wanted the public to know.
Any other comments from the council? Hearing none, we're in order for a motion to adjourn, what did I forget now? Oh, I'm sorry. I am so sorry, I am, no, I'm not okay. Yeah, it says, comments from the city manager.
Thank you.
And I missed it.
Just wanted to make sure the council all heard and the public, pretty exciting news today that the Iowa High School Athletic Association's announced that state baseball's coming back for another three years, really just have to commend a great team. I know the Chamber folks were here, Jack was here, and just the general volunteers, I mean, that is really what brought that back for another three years, and so it's really exciting. We will have a contract, we've been working with them for a few months now, we couldn't say anything until now, on a contract, a three-year contract, that'll come back to the council in the near, near future, but just really exciting news, so thank you.
Is there a motion to approve that? No. Just seeing you paying attention, because I'm obviously not, sorry about that again. Okay, now we are in order for a motion to adjourn.
I'm looking to adjourn, second. Third.
Seaman?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Board Nero?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.